It is 6:30, so I'm gonna go on and call us to order and open us up with a prayer. If y'all would bow your heads with me, please. Dear only Father, thank you for this day and thank you for everything that you have blessed us with. Thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our city. And we pray that you give us wisdom and guidance in the decisions we make. And we ask all this in your name. Amen. Zach, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
That is eight present, one absent.
Thank you, sir. Next up on our agenda items is public comments relative to agenda items only. Director Free, I don't believe we had anybody sign up for that that I noticed. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. With that being the case, I'm going to move on to item four, acceptance of the agenda. Know that we've got a couple items on consent agenda, so if somebody wanted to move this off, move anything off consent agenda, now would be the time to do that. But otherwise, not hearing anything, I am going to entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Move to accept the motion.
Second.
Right. We have a motion from Commissioner Altizer, and we've got a second from pretty much everybody else, so I'm gonna move into a voice vote on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is approval of our minutes from our January 7th meeting. I think everybody's probably gotten the opportunity to review everything, and so with that, unless anybody has any changes or anything like that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the minutes from our January 7th meeting as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Slattery, and can I get a second on that, please?
Second.
Second, I think I heard Commissioner Martin on that first. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. I'm gonna note that Commissioner Longmire abstained because she was absent on that, but outside of that, that motion carries. And next up on that agen, next up on our agenda is item six, our consent agenda. I believe, Caitlin, you're actually on both of these, and know you share one with Timothy. Would you like to take this, or do you like Director Free to take this, or?
Hey Caitlin, can, and then Timothy can do.
Okay. Not to put you on the spot or anything, there you go.
Good evening. So Patsy Curtis property is being, this property off of Walton Ferry at 300 Walton Ferry Road. They are subdividing the lots into four separate lots. This is SR3, and it allows for a single family of a minimum of 7,500 square foot lots, and they're gonna be putting in additional sidewalk with curb and gutter.
Thank you. And, yep.
On Farmers Bank, this is the, it's a vacant site next to Cajun Steamer in front of Clarendale. It's gonna be a 5,000 square foot bank. That'll be, they'll be connecting that rear frontage road that currently terminates at the back of Cajun Steamer. That will connect through there to where Clarendale has their entry point, and Farmers Bank will have their, their access off that rear frontage road.
Thank you. Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you, Timothy. With that, I am going.
I got a question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hasty.
I'm running a little slow tonight.
That's all.
Why are they asking for three times the required number of parking spots to be built? I mean, I, it sounds to me like they're doing more than just banking, because most banking now is done online, and people don't set their foot in a brick and mortar bank rarely. You know, I've never been known as the real greenie, but I don't know why we don't have a little bit more grass and a little less parking. You know, why they got 39 when only 13, or 36 when only 13 are required, to me seems a little bit excessive.
Timothy, can you speak to that, or do we have a representative for the developer as well? If you can come to the podium, if you'd like to. If you would, state your name and your address and introduce yourself, please.
President of Farmers Bank. That's an excellent question. Our plan for this facility, because of the size of the Hendersonville market, will probably have 12 to 14 of those will actually be employees that work there. And if you've been in a Farmers Bank, and I know a few of you have, we do a lot of lending. We do a lot of construction lending. We do a lot of remodel loans, and so we do have a lot of customer traffic in our branches, believe it or not. You come to Portland, Tennessee and sit for a few minutes, you'll see we have about 40 parking spaces there as well. And so rather than running short, and it being such a big lot, I know the developers had looked at subdividing that, and I guess you could, we thought it was a little more prudent, and we've still got plenty of green area, but we also would rather have a few extra parking spaces than run out.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I am going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion from Commissioner Longmire.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Altizer. Now we'll go into a roll call vote on that.
Motion has passed with eight yeses, zero noes.
Thank you, Zach. Thank y'all. Next up on our agenda is item seven, a concept plan. And Caitlin was on this one as well, and was there representative? Yeah. You would be kinda on standby on things, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
Caitlin, would you tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
So the Hendersonville Parks and Recreation Department has applied for a grant through the 2024 Recreational Trails Program through the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation. They are doing a pump track with additional parking spaces for ADA. This is to be used by the community. It's something the community's missing. The Rotary Club has already collected funds to assist with the 20% that the grant is not covering. And then it is within existing park space over at Veterans, as you can see on the screen, and so there won't be any additional purchasing of land or anything like that. This is a TDEC requirement that they come before us with a concept planned. They will be coming back with a site plan once they are ready to build.
Anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Director?
I could not have said that better myself.
All right. Love it. With that, any questions, comments from commissioners?
I would.
All right. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hasty.
Second.
Got a second, I believe I heard Commissioner Altizer on that first, so we'll move into a roll call vote on that as well.
Me, too.
You, too.
We used to have a BMX track, for those that have lived here forever, in Drake's Creek Park. It was a fun little, actually it was a huge dirt bike track behind the high school baseball field, so this is something, an element that's been missing for a long time in our community. So thank you all for taking this on tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for doing that, and I'm glad you referenced that BMX track. I remember that from.
Good times.
Yeah, they were, they were. But with that, I believe, Commissioner Longmire, you still need to cast your vote. You still need to cast your vote. That's. And Zach, will you read the total?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve is passed with eight yeses and zero noes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Yes, sir. Next up is item eight, site plans, and this is for Football Five site plan. Is there a representative from the developer here on that? If you would, just kinda stand by on this, and then Timothy and Caitlin, y'all were working on this as well, so I'll let you all kinda kick things off here on this.
Okay. I know y'all know where this, where this is located. So this, this is the site plan for Football Five. It is in compliance with the final development plan, except they are requesting a waiver from one of the building design standards. Y'all may recall that when Football Five first came through, they got the lot rezoned, so they're, they needed the rezoning from industrial to general commercial to allow for their outdoor soccer field. The indoor recreation was allowed in industrial, but they needed that zoning change to allow for that outdoor field. So along with the zoning change from industrial to general commercial, the building design standards went up quite a bit. So they have, on their front elevation, they've done quite a bit of work to bring that into compliance with general commercial design standards, have quite a bit of brick and stone on it, or stone and ephesus, that meet the glazing requirements on it. But they are requesting a waiver to allow metal siding on the sides in rear. So metal's not a permitted material in commercial. In industrial, it is permitted on the sides in rear, so long as it's screened, and Football Five has committed to, if they get the waiver, to planting evergreen trees down the sides and the rear of the, of the building.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, that was well said.
Okay, all right. Any questions, comments from commissioners? I think I saw Commissioner Slattery light up first, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question on orientation, so are this, the sides are the side facing the future Grace Place location at the other end of the building, and the front is?
Correct. Yeah, so, so the, the front is facing the cul, the end of that cul-de-sac. The left, the left side would be facing Grace Place.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hasty?
Just a couple of questions. Looking at the site plan and the grading plan, you know, the foot, the field itself is down below the parking area significantly.
Correct.
I didn't see on the site plan any steps or access, how people gonna get from the parking lot down to the field? They gonna walk down that graded bank?
Well, they'll be able to pull directly up to it, and that bank, that, that area, I said they'll be able to pull directly up to the field down at that lower, the parking lot does come down to that grade, and there'll be very minor amount that they would have to cross. That'll be a flat plane. It won't actually be coming down too much.
That's down to the lower end, long ways from the parking lot. They gonna have to walk back down the driveway to get there.
The buffer between the two are not that, is not that great. The, the grass area between the two is not as great as it looks on paper.
Okay, but I don't see people walking that far to get there. And I got another question on paragraph three of your letter. The color scheme will remain the same with a complete black exterior?
We had been discussing, so the, the sides in the back being black, the side, metal siding, and then we have multiple different colors of a grayish-black and different textures of stone to bring more contrast to the front as the light hits it. That's been designed by our architect, and then obviously we've agreed to put evergreen trees around the sides in the back to, to mask that metal siding. And then we also have red accents on the awnings that come over top and on the, on the main entrance as well.
I think black's gonna make it stand out a whole lot more. I think a more neutral color would be appropriate, but if you'll work it out with our staff, and Mr. Whitten, if Mr. Whitten says black's fine, I'm fine. If he thinks it needs to be a neutral color, that's what I'll support.
We've, we've been working well with Mr. Free and Mr. Whitten this entire time, so I'm more than happy to accommodate however we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Before I recognize Commissioner Martin, you'll have to forgive me, I forgot to ask if you, state your name and your.
Sorry. Chuck Messer, I'm from Columbus, Ohio.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Martin, I believe you're next.
I just had a quick comment based on the metal siding discussion and the future Grace Place. I know you're gonna have trees in between it, but would, would you be amenable to wrapping the brick around that one side for that one development that's coming in?
If that is what is required, then absolutely. I mean, we've been more than, more than willing to accommodate whatever we need to. This is really coming from a cost standpoint with the additions to the front elevation and everything. I mean, it is quite several hundred thousand dollar swing to wrap that entire building in brick. So that's kinda what we're trying to address with the site development costs that we have to develop the site. We're just trying to make it as accommodating as possible.
Yeah, and we've struck a balance with you on the parking count and stuff before to, to make things work for you.
Correct.
So that might be something, just not the whole thing in brick, but just that one facing Grace Place, so.
Yeah, that's agreeable.
All right. I don't know how you would.
Yeah, we can do a water table.
Doing a water table, that might not have.
Okay.
Make it a.
Okay.
All right, so yeah, so they'll talk with you about bringing the brick up to a certain height to give it some kind of relief.
If I, if I could clarify, would it be acceptable for, for the stone that's on the front to serve in place of brick, or should it be, and the, the front is mostly this stone?
The reason we did the stone was for texture purpose, and, and one, it gives, like I said, some contrast with different textures of the stone. We have more options with that to kinda dress up the front more, and that much brick is just very monotonous across the entire scheme of the building, so that's where we were trying to break it up with the stone. But at this point, whatever surfaces.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, it might make sense to have similar materials in the front, the, the stone.
Turn the corner.
To, to have that serve for the water table, rather than specifically brick.
Yeah, just wrap, wrap it around and just go up to a certain height, maybe like where the windows are.
Yeah. Commissioner Martin, you wanna make that as a form of a motion, or you just want that to kinda be an understand? We are.
Yeah, okay. That's just my thought, and we can make a motion later.
Okay. I think next I saw Commissioner Longmire.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just from my own understanding, because I can't see it easily on this, what is the dimension of that end that faces Grace Place?
It's 100 feet long. 100 feet long.
100 feet long.
Mm-hmm.
So even, even bringing whatever masonry material that, that we land on from the front and wrapping it around, 100 feet of black, that's going to be fairly close to some of the, the residential areas of Grace Place, so that, that does concern me. If there's something else that someone can suggest to break it up, I appreciate the added cost of doing masonry of some kind over the whole wall, but if there's something we can do to break up 100 straight line of black above the masonry, that just, to me, I'm gonna look out my window and think there's always a storm coming if I'm living in one of the Grace Place residents.
There, there is a, I know the Grace Place plan is not up there, but there is a pretty significant tree buffer between us and Grace Place, and as well as there's an elevation change, so we're lower than Grace Place is, as well as a, a large parking lot between us and Grace Place before the, any residential. They do have their clubhouse kinda positioned close to where ours is, but there's a pretty good gap between us and the housing.
Okay.
And we have, we've been working.
Trees aren't really much of a buffer from about October to April.
That is fair.
And I, I just, I think of my own residence, I would not want a solid black wall to be what greets me when I look out a window. So if there's something we can do to break up that black a little bit, I would be much more supportive of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Longmire?
Did you hear me?
Yes.
I think that, let me just, let me just say no.
Okay, absolutely. Commissioner Hardwick, I know you were lit up down there. Any other questions, comments for commissioners? There, I'll revisit Commissioner Martin, and then is there something you'd like to put in a form of a motion, or you want, or do you want the staff to more informally kinda work out what we've discussed there? Is that's?
We can make a motion to approve with the elevations to be negotiated with staff.
Okay. I'm gonna just add to those, if you're okay with that, and all, all other staff comments as well. So, so we have a commotion, a motion, commotion, sorry. Woo! That was a Freudian slip, if I've ever heard one on that, so. We have a motion from Commissioner Martin. Can I get a second on that, please? I believe I heard a second from Commissioner Slattery on that, and we will go into a roll call vote now.
Did our department use the stop line?
They did, they did. Zach, will you read the results, please?
Absolutely. Motion to pass was approved with seven yeses and one no.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is still under site plans, the site plan for Innovation Industrial, and Timothy, you and Caitlin are on this as well, and is there a representative from the developer here on that? If you would, just kinda come up in the podium and just kinda be waiting on that, and we'll. But whoever wants to kick us off?
Okay. So this, this site is located next to Football Five, just south, just south of it. It's, this lot is in industrial, and it'll be a 107,500 square foot facility for warehousing and distribution. The applicant is Levitt Industrial LLC, and they're requesting a waiver from the industrial building design standards. We just got done talking about commercial design standards. So a waiver from the industrial, industrial building design standards, which, which they allow tilt-up concrete panels on the sides and rear of an industrial building, but not the front. The front can have brick, stone, split-faced block, ephesus, and stucco. Levitt is proposing tilt-up panel, concrete panels on all sides of the building, and they're proposing to use form liner, which is a, it's a way to stamp the concrete with a dimensional pattern into the concrete surface to imitate a brick pattern at the, at the entry focal points of the front wall, and an ephesus texture on the other tilt-up front wall panels. We did encourage them to employ the use of real brick in limited areas at the, at those entry focal points, but they're, they're wanting to use that form liner and do 100% tilt-up on, on that front wall.
If y'all would introduce yourselves, and if there's anything you'd like to add, then please.
Yeah, good evening. Ben Swift, I'm with Levitt Industrial, Lenox Road, Atlanta, Georgia. And thank you for taking this under consideration, and I, I think Mr. Whitten put it pretty well. I think what's at least important for me, just to kind of show the, the texture of that covered tilt wall and painted tilt wall exactly there. It, it does truly mimic the, the look of stucco and ephesus, so happy to answer any specific questions relative to that, but to add on relative to the form liner, the reasoning for that is the way these buildings are built, the front, from a structural standpoint, the form liner becomes part of the structure. It's, as Mr. Whitten said, you pour the concrete, similar as you do for all the other walls, but into something that basically makes it look like brick. If brick were to be added, it would not be structural, so it would, it would basically just be a facade treatment, which in, you know, in the case of stucco would likely mean significant maintenance, as, you know, stucco on top of a structure that isn't necessarily built to be stucco would, would require significant and regular maintenance. So that's our main reason for the paint to mimic it. But I can leave it there and answer any specific questions if there's anything relative to the architectural standpoint.
Director Free? I didn't leave out one, I just wanted to point out, in the other industrial lots there, we've got Surpro, which is mostly ephesus, does have some brick on the corners, and then Elliott Electric, which is about to be under construction. It's further down Innovation Way, closer to New Shackle. That's got a hu, it's 100% brick on the front of it, and, and then wraps the, around the, halfway down the side, the, the New Shackle side of, of it. It's also in industrial.
Director Free?
Yeah, I might, I might just add that tilt-up walls in industrial aren't, aren't allowed without a waiver. Typically, I think the thought about that is, is that tilt-up walls generally don't have a lot of texture, and they can, you know, it can look, it can look pretty plain. I think in this particular instance, with the, with the detail of the tilt-up wall, it's, you know, it's, it's looking different than I think we might normally think of, of a, of a tilt-up wall. And it had even been something where we had talked about as a staff, is that something, you know, in our next zoning or, zoning, zoning text revision, that we want to remove that from industrial, because understandably, a lot of these buildings are very large, and the tilt-up type of construction is an efficient way to construct a, a building. But I think I would still keep it like it is, where that any development just like this would have to come to the planning commission, and then the planning commission could weigh the aesthetics of that particular tilt-up. So as Timothy had said, this could be stucco, it could be cut concrete block, so from a visual standpoint, some of the other alternatives, you know, might not be as desirable as a tilt-up wall that has some actual detail to it. So I just wanted to kinda share that.
Thank you, Director Free. Commissioner Martin?
I was just gonna say, I totally agree with you. There's a stigma with tilt-up walls that stemmed from the 70s and 80s when they did all the grocery stores and the exposed aggregate, and today, the technology's a lot better. In fact, there's walls you wouldn't really realize what's tilt-up wall now, so I would, I would agree.
Commissioner Hardwick?
So I've watched a lot of industrial be built over my career, and the way, with Commissioner Martin, and the way they're doing it right now, and what I've seen built over the last 15 years, it looks phenomenal. I'm really glad you guys are doing that. I'd much rather see this than have metal. I was really concerned when I saw it, you were gonna do something on the front and metal on a big building like this. I'm extremely happy that you're bringing this quality. Did have one question, why are you not wrapping the drive all the way around the building?
So.
I'm assuming it's a great elevation, but it sure would be nice to see it come, if I'm a truck driver, to be able to come all the way around that building.
It's a good point, and I would say for any building over approximately 150,000 feet, that is a must-have for our site plans, but when the buildings get a little smaller, you start to have tenants more from a, a box truck standpoint, where the circulation isn't as important, they're a little bit more nimble, and specific to this site, it is a bit of a great issue, that if we were to bring, we typically like to have that circulation 26 to 30 foot wide, and so if you bring that around, we'd probably lose about 20,000 feet on the building. But in most cases, I completely agree, that is a very good to have on the site plan.
So in leasing this building, are you expecting it to be one tenant, two tenants?
In all likelihood, we expect it to be multiple tenants, and the type of tenant we fully expect, based on other comparable, you know, leases and uses elsewhere, are kind of your local plumber supply, you know, folks, and your home building supplies, your, you know, your kitchen granite countertop suppliers. Those are the types of tenants we expect to see in, call it your 35,000 foot kinda size range, once you get.
So basically, three tenants.
Right, that's our base case assumption here, yes.
Okay. Just curious again on this one, are you looking at metal roof, flat roof? What type roofing are you looking at?
It'll be a flat TPO layered roof, but the front fenestration will, will be feet, I think maybe three to four feet over the actual elevation of the roof.
Sure. Okay. Thanks for bringing it to the city. I think it's gonna be a great product and excited to have it here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardwick. Commissioner Altizer?
It'll be a flat TPO layered roof, but the front fenestration will be feet, I think, maybe three to four feet over the actual elevation of the roof.
Thanks for bringing it to the city. I think it's gonna be a great product and excited to have it here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardwick. Commissioner Altizer?
Just echoing what they've said, I do like the tilt-up construction. I like the texture on this construction. I think it will definitely be a benefit to the city and a benefit to this area, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Martin?
I just want to make sure that the fire marshal looked at it, as far as a fire truck turning around, I guess it can, if it's not too far, it can back, go backwards? You're all good? Okay.
Commissioner Slattery?
Just a comment, really has nothing to do with you. I think it looks like a beautiful building and happy you're here. But I'm thinking back to all of the football discussions and about the traffic on that road and their parking being adequate, so it's more just an observation for me that I, that I hope our compromise on the number of parking spaces was aggressive enough with football, now that we're gonna have potentially significantly more traffic than we have just with Servpro on that little road. It'll be interesting to see how it all shakes out.
Along those lines, Commissioners, obviously, y'all are going to be owners leasing this out, so do you have a tenant in mind, or is this being built on spec, or?
This is being built on spec at the moment, and which is a little bit easier for the smaller tenants. They, their requirements are usually pretty immediate, so it's a little bit tougher, but yeah.
Okay. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Director Free, you're lit up.
Yeah, I would just mention one other thing that's just worth mentioning, is that, I believe this is correct, Grace Place, Football Five, and this, this development are all working together on the excavation of all the land. So that's gonna really be beneficial for all three of them to be working on the site development together, instead of each one of them doing their own. And, you know, sometimes that can create some problems if it's all not done together. So I really appreciate all three of those owners working together. So that doesn't happen very often when you have three individual developments going on, so.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Altizer?
I'll just make a motion to accept with all staff comments.
There's a motion, and can I get a second on that, please? Was that Commissioner Martin down there, the second, motion, or second from Commissioner Martin? We'll now go into a roll call vote. Zach, will you read the totals, please?
Motion to approve has passed with eight yeses and zero noes.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item nine, staff level projects that have been approved. And then after that, I believe, is item 10, staff level projects that are pending. I'm gonna turn it over to Director Free now to kind of just walk us through both of those.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just do this fairly quickly. A lot of these are the same things that have been on here for a couple of months. You can see all the ones that were, that have been approved. We've got several of those knocked off, and then the projects still pending. That, we'll mention that Broken Paddle Outfitters, it is moving, moving forward, so hopefully that will be approved. That will be approved at the next thing, at the next meeting. But all these other projects are moving, moving along very well. I will mention, because we mentioned it before, the Wells Fargo ATM in front of Kroger over on Main Street. They did agree to move that from the location we didn't like, and so we're working with them on that now. So hopefully, that'll be approved as well before our next meeting. And that's all I had on that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll let you go on and take the pending ones as well.
The last item here is a resolution accepting, acceptance, recommending acceptance of the complete streets in Waterford Village, off-site improvements, the connection of Lakeside Park Drive to the existing road south here in Hendersonville. And this is recommending to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. This has already been to the Board of Mayor and Alderman Public Works Committee, and they've approved it. And we'll move, if this is approved through here for recommendation to accept, it'll go on the next BOMA agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented. I have a second on that from Commissioner Altizer, and we'll go into a roll call vote on that one.
Motion to approve has passed with eight yeses and zero noes.
Thank you. And lastly, item 12, planning director comments?
I don't really have any comments this evening. I do, I do want to mention for next month's meeting, we do have one fairly significant item, the In-N-Out Burger did formally submit. I think we've had a lot of questions here the last several months about that. That's gonna be at the old gas station at the corner of Anderson and Main Street, East Main Street. So that'll be coming before the planning commission at your next, next meeting. That will involve a site plan, a request to add a use, and then a plat amendment as well, so. Yeah, no samples, I don't believe. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. That we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please sign and file by saying aye. Any opposition?